I will call the meeting of the Union 38 School Committee to order Thursday, June 18th at 5:00 PM. This meeting is a virtual meeting and is being recorded. We have, I believe, full attendance according to my records. I would note one thing, Darius, for the Union 38 Committee. The voting members in the Deerfield School Committee this year will be Kenneth Cudaback, David Sharp, and Carrie Echols. Trevor McDaniel will not be the voting representative for the coming year.
Trevor.
So.
If we get Trevor not being at the meeting, get food.
Right. You gotta represent.
Is Frontier called to order?
Frontier's not here, so.
Oh, that's right. No Frontier this time.
That's correct.
I completely forgot.
We missed them already.
Public comment. I notice a large number of people listening in. Do we have anyone that wants to make a comment? If so.
I do.
I would recommend that you ask them to put it into chat, and then you can go into the chat and ask them and call on them that way.
Yes, that's a great idea. If you just would note in chat that you'd like to make a comment, I can respond that way. Thank you for the tutorial, Darius. So Holly Johnson says she would like to comment. So Holly, excuse me, go ahead.
Hello, I have a brief statement I'd like to read. I'm a parent to two girls at Wheatley and one at Frontier. I'm co-president of the Wheatley Elementary School PTO, and I am co-chair of the Frontier Regional Union 38 Special Education Parent Council. You may have received an email from me from the CPAC last week. Just had the introduction. And one of the PAC's duties is to meet regularly with school officials and school committees to participate in the planning and development of special education programs. Speaking on behalf of both the PTO and the CPAC, asking that parents be more included in the fall back-to-school planning process. Currently, as far as I know, there isn't a parent representative on any of the eight committees other than employees of the district that may also be parents. I know parent surveys are being developed, but that's not quite the same as allowing parents to be a part of the discussion. And we believe it is important that we are included. Parents have been with children throughout this quarantine, helping them with their lessons, and often we have been their teacher. You have not seen our children in person since the quarantine began, and this situation has changed them quite a bit, and they're not the same children that left the school in March. I know some children are really worried about getting sick if they just touch each other on a playground. And even with that worry, the instinct to play closely is so strong, they touch each other a little bit anyway. And then they are having that anxiety after the experience well into the evening, worrying if they've done something wrong, if they're gonna get sick. It could be August before the district informs parents of their plans for the fall, and families need time to form a transition plan. We can't be expected to drop our children off on the first day of school to a brand-new situation without an adequate transition time in August. Parents are looking for answers now and are trying to decide now if they will send their children back at all. We see the guidelines coming from the state, and we see the plans put forth by other school districts, but we don't know what is being discussed in our district. And families need to make their comments now. Will they be homeschooling alone? Will they opt for remote instruction? Will remote instruction be offered? Is it going to be a partial week or partial days? If so, how would we coordinate our work schedule around that? The CPAC recently did our own survey of CPAC parents, and 90% of respondents felt their child's needs were not adequately met during the closure. 30% are not comfortable sending kids back in the fall, and 50% unsure if they would be comfortable sending them back. They had many concerns specific to students on IEPs and 504s. Socially distancing and wearing masks will be hard for everyone, but especially kids with special needs, with speech needs and social issues. A hybrid of in-person and remote learning could have a huge impact on kids with ADHD or autism spectrum disorder who need a consistent routine to function. Families want more communication and collaboration was also put forth from the survey. DESI has formed a return-to-school working group to help develop a plan for the fall. The group includes teachers, superintendents, city officials, and five parent members out of a group of about 46. Why are there not parent members on the local level? Families want that communication and to collaborate. Parents that I have talked to will be deciding whether or not they're gonna send their children back to school in the fall. I have talked to parents, choice parents, who are looking at other districts, who are looking around for their best options. And I have talked to parents that are researching, pulling their kids out of public school entirely and looking into homeschooling. We need to be active participants in the plan for the fall, and we feel as parents we have valuable insights to offer. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I will defer to, some of what you're asking about and talking about are questions that indeed we do not have yet at the union or regional level, but we're on our first informational meeting for the full committees tonight. So you'll probably hear some answers to your questions. As to parental involvement on the committees, I can't speak to that. I'm going to be turning the floor over to Darius. If we have no other public comments, I've gotta get back in to see if I had anyone else indicate a desire to chat. Give me a moment. Okay, there are no others people indicating that. So I'm going to be turning, thank you for your comments.
Can I just make a comment?
Who are we? I can't see.
Maybe you can't see me. I'm a teacher at Sunderland Elementary School. And I just, very briefly, I just wanted to thank the school committee for all their support during this extraordinarily challenging time for schools and education. And to my colleagues, I just wanna say thank you for all your support. We really, truly collectively innovated what teaching and learning tried to look like. We did our very best, thanks to our IAs, all our essential workers, and everyone from administrators to staff and support for really helping us make this work. And thanks to all the parents who turned their dining rooms into classrooms. You are all really essential workers, and we really appreciate the support you gave us. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Darius, I will now turn it over to you.
Before I jump in, Shelley, do you want to just give a brief overview? Because we don't have the broken-up meetings.
Oh, that's right.
She was just gonna give a, it's not on the agenda, but she usually just gives an update. I just wanted the committee members to know where things are from the business office financially. It's not much news, but I want her to tell you that.
Absolutely, by all means.
So there's not a lot to report at this time on changes from our last meeting. Projections of what we talked about and agreed upon for frozen spending for FY '20 and support of FY '21 are still on track. I did email out the memo as per usual that listed all of the warrants since we're in a group meeting. We can drop those into the notes. I'm not gonna read through them all right now, but all of the schools have processed two warrants already this month, except for Sunderland. The second batch for Sunderland is currently in process. And then when we have individual meetings next month, I will be soliciting some feedback next time we have individual meetings on how this process is going to make sure that it's working for you in the way that it's working for our office, just so that we have some open dialogue about the electronic warrant process. And there's nothing new on the FY '21 budget. I know that that's on the agenda a little bit later, but I don't have anything other to report on that either.
If I could just, one second, Shelley, I want to compliment you on the electronic signing of warrants. I think that's a big step. I haven't had a chance to talk with Town Hall yet, but I would assume it's making their life easier too. I don't know if Trevor's gotten that feedback or not, but.
Yes, I have. I've talked to them, and they are very pleased with the way it's working. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So back to Darius.
All right, so I'm gonna go through and set up, well, first, I just wanna say, you know, congratulations to, I guess, all the faculty and staff. Today was the finish line that we got to. And I sent a note out, but it basically, it was a long haul this spring, and they did a lot of, and went off what was said earlier. They did a lot of things that were outside the box, that, you know, a lot of learning on the fly. And then a lot, a big thank you to parents who also had a dig on a lot of extra roles that they weren't normally prepared to do. And, you know, in the end, I think we made it to the finish line. As we said, it was not the same, to bounce off what Holly said, you know, it was not the same as being in person. I think that remote learning, you know, we did the best we could in the circumstances, and we're hoping to learn from what we did this spring if there's a case where we have to be remote in the fall. So I'm gonna kind of run through our planning process with everybody here. I also have Kim McCarthy and some of the principals and the wings that might be asked to jump in to help me kind of make sure I say everything correctly and don't forget important things. Whoops, I started to go to share my screen without sharing my screen. I'm gonna give you just a general overview of where we are at with how we're setting things up, the committees that were developed, and what those committees' responsibilities are. And I will also try to address some of Holly's concerns within that as I see them, but you as a school committee can chime in there. So I'm just gonna share my screen, and it should be there now. And then I'm going to present this. Did that work?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so those of you who were on the Frontier Committee last night, you're gonna have to bear with me as I'm gonna repeat a lot of what was said last night. But basically, what these, the chairs got together and why we're so, we're set up the way we are right now, probably an important question. We were gonna do a joint meeting, both the secondary with Frontier and the elementary. The chairs felt that we should divide the two meetings in case there's a lot of questions or feedback that'd be more related to one age group than the other. But right now, the planning committees that are gonna talk about this are being, we're acting as one district talking about this. And so, and I'll go into more detail, it'll make more sense as I go through it. So here are some nice pictures. This is where we were before the closure. It's nice, you know, nice action shots of students learning at both levels. We gotta kind of see the kids here on the last day of school. And then we had, during closure, things kind of changed drastically as we went on online and virtual learning, and then activities away from the computer. So the goal of the planning is basically, you know, we wanna make sure we have a collaborative approach, that we are looking at the safety and well-being of our students, that we are supporting adaptive environments for both the faculty, staff, students, and families, and then a positive social, emotional, academic learning outcomes for all. So with those general questions, we go a little bit further. We also are looking, you know, as the top priority being health and well-being, and we have to follow the recommendations that first are put out by the CDC. And we don't have the state guidelines yet. And the state guidelines are gonna be crucial. I have a little birdie that's telling me they're probably coming out tomorrow. I have a meeting with the commissioner tomorrow morning at 9:30. And since I met with him last Friday, him and, you know, 400 of my closest superintendent friends met with him. I don't want anybody thinking I'm having individual meetings with Jeffrey. But we, you know, he basically said he'll be out Thursday or Friday. He then asked for a meeting tomorrow morning. So I imagine that we're gonna get some of this guidance, this important guidance tomorrow morning. But basically, we're planning for three different scenarios. And this is also coming from leaks that we already have from the state. An all-in-person model, a blended model, where you may be in person some days and not other days, or portions of the days and not other days, and then an all-remote model. There is the concern that, in the back of our minds, and as we're seeing the reemergence of the virus in different portions of the country, and we have these, hearing these talks about a second wave, that we also at the same time have to be prepared, that we have to go back to remote learning to, this time, be prepared to put the best product moving forward. So basically, we created eight groups, subcommittees. The final, one of the groups I just talked about to kind of remove from the list is the summer instruction. By the time we kind of rolled out these communities, we've already went ahead to put to forward summer instruction, what that can look like. And summer instruction is evolving. Right now, we're starting with virtual summer instruction, because that's what we had at the time, starting planning, with the possible doing some in-phase stuff a little bit later, possibly into August. But we're still waiting, actually, the final guidance from the state on that. The other committees, I'm gonna go through, I think it's easiest to explain by looking at our doc that I sent out to school committees. Let me just click on this. And this is a live document, meaning that it's changing. Ooh, it's documented, looks a bit long. It is very long. But it breaks, and it breaks down our groups. We have a governance groups, that's basically myself, Kim McCarthy, and Sarah Mitchell. It's basically making sure that groups are working and they're meeting their outcomes, and then putting together what's going to happen from those groups. So each one of these groups has a series of, I would say, questions that they're answering, and I'm gonna show you what those look like. And the process of this is that they're gonna come up with solutions in possible scenarios of what school can look like in the fall, and then it has to come back to school committee. You guys are the governing body of the district, and we're gonna have to present to you what we want to do, and it has to be approved by our school committee and also by the Board of Health. But if we follow all those measures, we will be likely doing what the Board of Health does. But first of all, we have, you know, facilities and safety. This group plans, will plan the facility use, the guidelines in all the buildings, including cleaning, sanitizing, room arrangements, physical distancing requirements, et cetera. Obviously, this is if we're coming back in person, and to what degree we're coming back in person. The meat of this document that I shared with you, and it's also been shared, the teachers also have copies of this. You can see the members of each group there on the right. The meat of the document is this right here in column. And I'm gonna go to School Operations, which is probably one of the healthier loads, because they're basically looking about what does the school site look like and how will operations happen if students are here. So if I click on this School Operations listing, and I apologize for those who went through this prior to the meeting, but I did say I would walk through it, because there is a ton. If you're gonna look at, this is just the planning for the fall. If you take all these pages of all the sub-pages here, it's probably 30 pages of just the planning of what has to happen in the fall. And you can kind of see going through that. You know, what is, you know, what are the safety actions of each school? You know, what does it look like? You know, what happens if we have cases of COVID? You know, how are we communicating that? We have to look at transportation. How do we do arrivals and dismissals? I mean, you look at, and we look at, we have four different schools. Again, I'm talking about elementary school, and I focus there in this meeting. We have different size schools. So this means something different to each schools, but I do wanna move together as one district. There's a lot of, we are also one union for the teachers and IAs, and so we wanna make sure that, you know, we're working together on that. But if you look at, if you're a resident of Deerfield, you know, drop off and dismissal looks very differently than if you're a resident of Conway. You know, and so dropping off 60 first graders looks a lot different than dropping off 20 first graders. So, and what does that look like? How do you do social distancing as into the building? So these are all things that are being thought about. And as you're hearing from other districts, and I'm on, and I know what other districts are doing. I'm on the calls with those superintendents and hearing where they're at and what their approach is. We're not behind other districts. Some larger districts are, I think they're deadline to be able to get that out there, to get the, what they need in each one of their buildings because of their sizes. Maybe you have to be a little bit earlier. I believe Northampton, this is all, I believe, public documents. Northampton, I think, is trying to vote at the end of the month from their school committee. I believe Amherst is trying to do the first week in July. When we talk about our schedule, we're gonna be talking about the second week in July, bringing back some models to the school committee to review, and then with the following week, vote on. And when we get through this, when we get through this, you'll see this a little bit more clearly. But as I go through this, I mean, it's, as I said, it's a live document, so they're keeping notes and that kind of thing. So Kim, I'm gonna ask you to talk in a second here, because Kim has been intimately involved with the day-to-day community work, committee work on this. But Kim, do you wanna jump in and just talk a little bit about? You there? I can't see you because I'm sharing my screen.
I'm here. Thanks, Darius. My Control D didn't work too well, but I'm here. I'm happy to talk to you about the committees. We have a wide representation from our schools with different roles of positions that they are. And we've really come together and working very, very hard on having meetings multiple times a week to go through these questions and to think within the three models. And it is a true collaborative approach with the voices from the teachers. And the biggest thing that we're looking at is we've learned so much about how to prioritize in this time, what is most important for us as teachers, for learners. And we're really focusing that on the integration of the social, emotional well-being of children and what they need to learn academically. And so each one of us is coming through safety actions and then applying it out in three different areas, with the idea of going deep and rich in the things that we prioritize the most, and that is the health and well-being of our students and our faculty and a quality education.
And so as you were talking, I was just kind of going through the curriculum development just so people can read some of it. I'm not gonna read all this to you, but for those who, we got quite a few people watching today. If those can kind of see, get an idea of all that is on the ticket here of what has to be discussed and figured out for next year. In each one of these, going in each one of these, looking at, you know, all that has to be taken on to what does school look like? How do we do it in a safe manner? How do we keep kids both safe and emotionally safe? Because, you know, I've heard the early, you know, my child can't sit in a classroom with a mask on, six feet away from everybody for six hours a day. And we're hearing that, and we understand that as well. And so these are all the things that we're putting into our planning, you know, our planning models here. So you can look at, we have health and wellness going through. So let me just back up where we are with School Operations, and we have curriculum instructional delivery. This is really looking about how we're gonna deliver the instruction in these different formats. Okay, we're talking about if we have to go back to, from a blended model, if we're all back in the building, who's gonna be back in the building if we can't fit everybody at once? How will we rotate people if that's gonna be the necessary kind of thing going on? We also have a Health and Wellness Committee. They're basically looking at what are the physical and mental needs of both, you know, staff and students returning to schools? Also looking at those vulnerable students in, I mean, from, you know, vulnerable homes. We're talking about food insecurity, you know, and how we're going to do all those sorts of things within these plans. Looking at technology and software, both back at school and if we have to go back remotely, how can we do it better than what we did this spring? And then we have a family and outreach, outreach and communication. They're developing the communication plan of what needs to be communicated out, how does it need to be communicated out? They're also looking at surveying parents. They have one draft right now that you're gonna see in the next couple of days, talking about your experiences this spring, and then also talking some general questions about the fall. But, I mean, we, we're gonna need to do a lot of surveying of parents because we need to know the numbers about where people are. But it's also very hard to survey people about what do you think about coming back to school? And we don't, we don't have the plan in front of you to say a yea or nay to. And I know, you know, Holly, you mentioned in your, in your public comment there that, well, looking at other districts, we are about where every other district is. Okay, and I would say we're ahead. This comprehensive plan is pretty impressive compared to our, the districts around us as well. You know, some of it is actually stolen from some of the districts around us as the superintendents are sharing their plans. But most people, you know, are waiting on the state guidance about, you know, where we're going, and we're gonna go back to the reopening plan, about where we're going and how we're gonna get there. And we need time to plan. And I understand people want answers now. I'm gonna be blunt, coming back and say, we don't have the answers. We're working, we're working in these committees to get a lot of involvement from our faculty and staff and different administrators and different buildings, all with particular needs, all representing different students and different populations, from grade levels to students in IEPs to, you know, all the other factors that make up our community. So the game plan to move forward, and then I'll take, you know, questions from the committee, is I'm proposing that, I was gonna do back-to-back meetings on the 16th when I made this slide yesterday, but I'm thinking that we should do maybe the 15th of July, meet with Union 38, the 16th, meet with Frontier, just so we have a smaller group so school committee members can ask questions and such, and then be able to fire back, give us feedback of where we're at, to come back as a joint meeting for the 23rd, where we do the final plans for approval. And then from there, we'll be able to, you know, communicate out what's happening with the fall. And then, basically, we have each of these planning groups. These planning groups are then going to go back to each school, where we're gonna have to have a school group about how these plans are gonna be implemented in each school, within each of these committees. And so, you know, giving the direction there. So, you know, that's basically where we are within our planning process. And I'm gonna answer the question regarding parent input. It's difficult, we had to turn away faculty members and teachers because you can only have so many people in these groups, okay? The governing body, which is elected, are the elected parent members in the community input, is the school committee. And that's how I viewed it when I put this thing together. You know, parents can give feedback to both the school and the school committee about where they think this direction goes. But I, you know, I'm stacking these committees right now with educational professionals, with, you know, it's out of the hundreds, if not thousands, of years of experience to try to figure out an unprecedented time. And so, can I make the committee so big? The committees have to be able to meet during the workday. How would I select parent members? And how would they be an actual representation of the parents in the community? Those are all kind of factors that, the reason why I said that, you know, we're gonna develop this with the educational professionals in the building, and we're going to present it to our governing, our governance oversight, which is the school committee, which is made up of parents, and the parents are their constituents. So that's the, that's the reason why it's set up the way it is. And because we do need to have meetings all, you know, throughout the day. And right now, these meetings, if you see the meeting schedule, they're happening all day long. And they're already, and I tip my hat to the teachers who volunteered to be on these committees. They're trying to close up the school year and spending hours on these meetings with homework that they have to come back to and start to give guidance. So that's where I'm at with, right here on step one of this, of this meeting there, Ken. So I don't know if there's questions from the committee members or likewise.
I've asked them to submit questions on chat or to let you know they wanna speak. So if you wanna take a look at chat and see if, I mean, I've seen some questions there. So that's how I thought we would try and approach it if people would sort of raise their hand by sending you a note on chat, and then they could speak, you could recognize.
Katie, you know, asked the questions regarding parent input. You know, and that's the, I gave you the answer. That's, that's how we move forward on this thing.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can I just make one more comment, which is the role of the parent on the committee is not always just to provide input and to, you know, like, obviously, they're experts on the educational side, but having parents will help with the communication out to the community after and can help keep people more informed and help people feel like there's, you know, someone at the table who's understanding things as much, you know, about where they're coming from. So it's just another perspective to incorporate. And I understand it might be hard to find parents, but I imagine there may be some who would volunteer to do it.
And I see a comment from Chaz Emrick saying, "Are these documents available publicly? If not, sharing them on a read-only basis, parentheses, would probably be very helpful for parents and alleviate a lot of concerns about things happening opaquely." So I think Darius has addressed some of the, some of the concerns. This is a document that's changing daily, if not hourly, and how it could be shared effectively is something, and Darius, I think Darius does a wonderful job of communicating with, with the Frontier and Union 38 communities. But I'll, I'll stop talking at this point in time and let him respond to that.
Well, so I guess, I'm trying to make this manageable. And so, you know, we're talking about four communities. You got, we got 1,500 families, 1,500 plus, maybe 1,600 families, or students rather, or a little bit less families. It's hard to, I mean, we can certainly share this document out there, and I think it's probably a good idea because it gets out to the families. I also don't want to overwhelm families with uncertainty as well. Because there's a lot of questions on there that bring out a lot of, oh, how are they gonna do that? How are they gonna do that? And I already, I mean, I get, you know, I get, you know, people send me stuff that are being posted on social media, and the concerns about, you know, when an idea gets started in one of these committees. it turns onto a life of its own. And I, I'm very, I'm very cautious of that. If we started saying, let me throw something out there, we're going to go week on, week off of school. Well, I imagine every family in this district immediately would, would, would pause and say, well, how does that affect me? That doesn't work for me, we can't do that. But we're trying to develop this, 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 this plan with all ideas on the table. Without the, you know, it's hard enough to, you know, you know, to put this kind of out of the box thinking for next year in making sure, and I, and I had a very strong statement to teachers that we're leaving our, our agendas at the door and, and, and really working through what is best educational wise, what is best to service the students. And we also understand that childcare is part of that, but it can't be the lead thing. It's got to be safety has to be the lead thing. And how we're educating students has to be the lead thing. And so safety for both teachers and students, not just the students. It's, it's a massive undertaking. So I, I mean, I can, the committees have already been meeting for weeks. I mean, I could put parents on them. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm giving you, I'm giving you my honest opinion. I'm not sure that it's going to change the trajectory of where things are headed on that. I mean, I could bring it, I have administrative meeting tomorrow morning. We can discuss that about trying to reach out to parents if that's a strong thing. But I also want to make sure that's, you know, parents who volunteer, you know, I also have to make sure that they're representative. You guys are all, the school committee, you're elected officials. You're elected to have your voice at the table. You know, do we go to PTOs and get the elected official from the PTO represent on these committees? Or just sit in on those things, they're going to be able to be free to do that. But it is, you know, you have to have the proper representation on that. So.
Michael Merritt.
Hi, thank you. Darius, I'll just first say, looking at the planning document, it's a tremendous, an amazing tremendous document that's been put together. So thank you so much and thank you to everybody that's put all of this effort and thought and time to really, you know, think of all the scenarios that we might have in the fall. Holly that spoke at the beginning, some of the things that I heard is, is that parents are looking to have a voice of some kind. And so I was curious about surveys that might be coming out. And then also it sounded like some of the things that parents want to share, maybe they don't have a vehicle to share it. So even if a survey comes out, there might be things that they want to say that aren't necessarily asked in the survey. I'm just thinking about my own two kids that attend Conway Grammar School. And I agree, they, they are not the same kids as they were in March. And I think trying to envision, you know, me as a school committee member, trying to envision what every, everybody else's experience has been, I, I just, I can't do it because everybody's had a different experience. And so as a school committee member, I would like to hear in some form of a survey where I could kind of get a sense of how everybody's doing. Just, that's my question, I guess. Is there a survey that could go out?
I have a survey, actually I pulled it up on my second computer in front of me here. It's, it's scheduled, is, you know, George is the head of the, my, the secondary principals in, in charge of the committee. Is there anybody on the committee that's on here that knows the date they plan on sending it out? It's early next week. Is there a teacher that's here or a staff member who's on there, Lisa?
Yeah, hi, I'm on that committee and we were finalizing the survey as of today. And then I believe it was scheduled to go out. I'm not sure where George is in that process, but as far as I know, the survey is completed at this point.
And Lisa, there's, there's open ended questions in there that parents can give feedback on a multiple of areas. I saw the draft, but you're, you're on the front line of that, that work.
Yeah, there, there are open ended questions as well as some pointed questions, mostly pointed. But to degrees like asking parents how they, how they think their children are faring, what was the best method of this remote learning for them? And then there's the well being committee also added on about half of the questions to look at the well being of the students as well. So it's a fairly comprehensive survey, I feel.
And Lisa, just, just because I have you there, because I love, there's nothing better than first person reporting because it shows that, you know, you're on this committee that's doing this work. There's other, we were talking about doing multiple surveys, is my understanding.
Yes, this is just the first survey because we didn't know what the plan is going to be moving forward. So yeah, this is, this is our like phase one survey and there are planned to be other surveys coming out.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot, Lisa, I appreciate it.
Yeah. If I could, Darius, just a, just a quick comment. I mean, from the perspective of a, a grandparent and someone who does not have children in the schools anymore, I view the, my, my role on a school committee as making sure that we're, and, and I know that the administration and faculty are, are pointing towards this as well, that, that whatever provisions and plans are put in place, we are providing an equitable educational opportunity for every child in the district. And I want to stress that, you know, it's, it's important to remember that. These may not be the most convenient plans for parents and families, but they are what provide, under our charge, the most equitable opportunity for education for our children and the best opportunities for education for all of our kids and all of our families. So.
And I, and I, and I also, go ahead, I think Elaine asked.
Is that Elaine? Yes. She wanted to speak so much, she left the meeting.
She pressed the wrong button.
She'll be back.
I'm right in the middle. It's interesting, they put the hang up sign right next to the, between the video and the whatever sign. And she wants to go back.
Yes, I know.
Here she is.
Here she is. Go ahead, Elaine. If she's back. Are you there, Elaine?
Yes, sorry, you know, Conway connectivity is not always the best. But I, I guess I wanted to say for those parents out there too, I mean, I know this is unprecedented, unprecedented time, but having been a child clinical psychologist for 30 years, you know, kids are amazingly resilient. If the adults around them are strong and lead and reassure and are just there for the kids in an honest and clear way, the kids are going to get through this just fine. You know, it's, it's, it's when our fears as parents start taking over and start spilling down to the kid level where it shouldn't, that then they, they start to get more and more anxious and afraid. But, you know, kids are, you know, I have in 30 years have never been, you know, I'm, I'm constantly surprised by kids resilience and ability to overcome many, many types of circumstances. So I guess I just want to put that out there for parents.
So Ken, I, you know, just following up on what the comment was, says I will, we will post this up. We'll put up a view only doc, obviously. I see Kim's nodding her head, yes, she's probably already working on that. We'll post it on the, all the websites so the parents can just log in there, click on and see what's going on. It may have to be, it may not be the, what to figure out, it's going to be that captured in time where it is right now and we'll have to update that posting because we may not be able to be a live doctor. I'll let Kim figure that out.
Yeah. Well, well, go ahead.
Can I go into the next issue on this?
Absolutely.
So there is going to be budget implications. And so right now, you know, Meg Birch and the Safety Committee and stuff are looking at, you know, what do we have to buy for PPEs even in a, you know, even in a mixed model of coming back or a full coming back? We do have to put in protection things for nurses, for staff members, for students. You know, there's a lot of talk about there about masks all day long. I would say that, you know, I, I did talk again with my buddy, the commissioner on that big call. And I think people have to wait and see what the requirements are, the map are for masks from the state. I think you're going to see that there's going to be some flexibility about how often students can wear mat or have to wear masks, given the spacing and the environments that they're in. It's a lot of common sense kind of things. If you're outside and, you know, that kind of things, they can be off, you're more than six feet apart without movement, you know, those kind of things. And they're also doing more, the younger the students are, the less, less the requirement. So be patient on those. But even within that, we have to be able to provide a lot of these PPEs, okay? And those are those, you know, those, the protection equipment, personal protection equipment. Our initial survey of what we needed for the first three months of school in this extremely liberal or extremely conservative, kind of somewhere in the middle, was $157,000 worth of equipment that we're going to need. Because you have to, just from a nursing standpoint, if you're dealing with a student who may or may not have COVID, you have to prepare like you do, you have to have an N95 mask, you have to have a gown on. Those are all disposable, you know, a lot of these kinds of things. And you have to have a certain amount as a backup. I think the number is going to come down slightly because we're also looking at market, the market's changing very quickly on the, the price, our jeans coming down on a lot of these supplies. And as we get the guidance from the state, I also think that a lot of students are going to be providing their own masks. And I think it might be the trending thing to do, to have your own cool mask. Or you want one that fits a certain way or, you know, that kind of thing. Then we won't have to be providing every day a mask. You know, we'll have to have backups on staff, on, on site and in case kids forget, or, you know, that kind of thing. They have a rough morning and didn't go in the bag and they jumped out of the car, you know, that kind of thing. But those are all these, this crazy planning that's taking place. But I'm just saying that number, there are some grants out there. Shelley, do you want to just kind of give the brief overview like you did last night about the different money we're going after? To look at, to go after, help pay for this stuff?
Sure. So the, the schools themselves are eligible for a grant through DESI. Kim and Sarah are working on those applications. And my understanding of it is that there will be a mix of what that money is spent on. Some of it might be PPE, some of it might be technology, some of it might be professional development. Also, the amount is limited and different by school because it's based on Title I funding. So there's a minimum of $20,000 that each school will get. And then if the school is eligible for regular Title I funding, they may be eligible for more funds. So that varies depending on what elementary school we're talking about. There's also Municipal Cares Act relief available to each town, which the towns have gracious, gratefully asked us for lists. So we've put lists together for FY20 already, which included technology and then some cleaning products. Not very large list because we haven't spent a whole lot in FY20 on COVID relief needs. And for FY21, we are still putting some lists together that could include PPE products again. But until we know from the state what the requirements are going to be, it's really kind of hypothetical right now of what we're looking at. So there are some different pockets of money that we will be able to tap into to help pay for this. And then we'll be looking at our own resources to fund.
And the, the CARE Act that goes to the school, don't anybody get excited. I don't think anybody got over $25,000, right? It did, right? I think, is that correct? Shelley, I think your folks got 25 or 26. Everybody else, everybody else got 20. So I don't think that the big federal government's bailing us all out.
Oh gee.
You know, we, we talk, we talk in general terms, let's not talk in general terms when it comes to money.
You have a, you have a question from Maureen, I believe. Can we work with the collaborative to get PPEs?
We are currently working with FERCOG, the Franklin County Coalition of Governments, Council of Governments, to do bulk ordering. The state is also coming out with some bulk ordering through the state. But in the same breath, the state also said to us, you may find that your own providers are cheaper and you're welcome to go that route as well. So it's kind of the, it's a mix between, we're going to help you, but your, your providers might be better, faster and cheaper. So right now, our, what we started to do is we did, we did a, a 10% order to start off. That's already ordered, I believe it comes in tomorrow. And then we're going to start looking, we're probably going to do a mixed bag order of working with different vendors because I've been talking with other superintendents where they're making orders. And then suddenly it's kind of like when you jump on Amazon or something, you order something and then find out later it's backordered. You know what I mean? And we're finding that with some of the vendors where you put the order in and all of a sudden, one of my neighboring superintendents, the order came in and it was only half there. They never even told her it was only, only half of it was coming. You know what I mean? So and all of a sudden, so now she short gowns and some other kind of thing. So, you know, I think we're going to spread, not put all our eggs in one basket, go to multiple vendors. Trying to try, obviously try to keep the lowest price, but within the lowest price, not always go the penny for penny, the lowest price, the penny or two more for a mask. We may go to another vendor just so we don't have our eggs backordered. Because you've got to remember, we got 270 districts all having the same problem, all going after the same supplies with no real statewide organization of how they're going to help us in that area, you know? You know, I mean, they're trying. Good? So basically what I, the, the, the next thing is the school committing summer meeting schedule. So, you know, meeting with the chairs, we basically said we were going to put this meeting together. And then I was going to come up with the two meetings in July. I'm pulling up my calendar in July. When you pull up my calendar in July, there's a lot of stuff on. We're looking at the 16th, you know, which is the second full week in, where I'm actually the 15th here for you guys. The 16th with Frontier, I think we'll do separate nights. I was talking about doing them back to back, but I'll be honest, we have about halfway through last night, I said, I can't do it. I don't have the stamina. We don't know what kind of feedback and I want to make sure there's plenty of time for questions and answers and comments and, you know, that kind of stuff. The thought is that the school committee would give feedback as long, as well as the public, the public and school committee getting feedback on those kinds of things. And then we come back on the 23rd, a week later, we can go back to those committees to iron out some of the details. And then if there's, there may be, again, the committee work on this is still coming through. They're actually waiting for the state guidance before putting the actual scenarios together. They may have a recommended scenario or they maybe say, here's A, B and C. You know, choose between them, we're leaning toward blank. And, and so not knowing exactly how it's going to be packaged, it's going to be something about that. Those committees will have information about all the different options that were, you know, that were discussed. And then we kind of have to weed it down to one. It's very important that we, you know, work, and it was more cumbersome working together on this, but we really need to because the amount of complications, if you do one thing in one school and not another. We act as one district, we have one union as also a major factor in here as well. And I think we need to find a plan that fits all students. So that's the, that's the idea while we're working together. So I basically just need to, I'm looking for that, you guys agree with that process moving forward? And then we'll have a meeting on the 15th and then a meeting on the 23rd and that will be the final, the final thing. And the other thing I'm going to, I'm going to say it out loud as well, it is a month away. But if you look at the calendar, and I said this last night, so I'll say it tonight, is I really, I'm pushing my administration to take the next two weeks off, including the teachers who are on those committees, they really take the next two weeks off. They know timing wise, someone's going to say, how dare you take the next two weeks off? I mean, the information is just coming out. But once we get that information and once we create this plan, it's going to be, it's going to be a roller coaster freight train to the finish line to get school started. And my administrators need, they're exhausted. They're exhausted from this long stretch, the teachers are exhausted from this long stretch. And so basically we're, we're doing the next two weeks, coming back on the, with immediately having meetings coming out of the, at the gate on the 6th and starting to put these plans together. And we're also, when we look at other school districts around us, and I know I start getting verbal, kind of too much at some point, but we're stealing all the good ideas from the districts around us as well. You know what I mean? There's no need, we are a smaller, more nimble district. And I ask parents and families to be patient, some patience here because we're looking what other schools are doing. You know, and, and how they're going through that process and stealing all the good ideas. And we're sharing all our good ideas too. So we're not just taking, we're also sharing on those meetings. So.
For collaborating, collaborating to stealing.
Good point, good point. Thank you, sir. I'll, I'll change the language there. So I guess comments on the, on the plan moving forward?
In terms of the summer meeting schedule, right?
Yep. Additionally, usually this, the school committee gives this, usually July and August off. Given, we all know where the budgets are going to be coming through, as soon as we get a cherry sheet from the states, we may have to have individual meetings after that point to discuss, hopefully not much of an impact. But if there is an impact where we're going to need to decisions from the school committee about how we're going to address those impacts, I imagine that's probably going to come. About how we're going to address those impacts I imagine that's probably going to come in August so um there'll be more individual meetings. All around this if we have start having budget issues if when the state comes out with their budget. Um but again the timeline on that budget I've got no new news on that if anybody else says it has any news on that they're welcome to share but. Um you know they're going to have something in July and then they're going to debate it out and then I don't know when we get our copy of it and I don't know when it's going to be voted so.
Fun times. Yes so. So did are there any questions regarding the summer the the planned summer meetings the July meetings at this point in time? If not we could move on to the school union thirty eight calendar.
Alright so we good?
I think we're good I don't see anybody raising a hand so.
Excellent um. So the school committee I mean the the school calendar is in the same kind of flux as the school year. So what I what I would like to do tonight is I would like the committee to vote on the school start day. Of August twenty seventh which is the Thursday um. Right now we're waiting on the information coming from the state that may give some teacher days from the school year calendar. One of the issues is that we only have two professional development days in our calendar we want to frontload them. Um because we need as much PD training as possible prior to the school year especially if our plan involves coming back into the building which I believe you know we're trying to. Uh lean toward an in person um as much as we can um and. We're going to need to do training because just how do we orchestrate kids coming into the building how do we orchestrate all the different procedures we're going to have around safety. Um both from teacher and then for students and nursing and all these other kind of things that we're going to frontload our professional development days. We may be getting some days from the state and I say that how do you get days from the state they may actually reduce the length of the school year by. By a day or two so that we have the day freed up um. To be able to fund the teachers to come back um early to work on those things so but what we really need to do parents do need to know like when are we going to start school you usually start around here. Um we also don't know what the rollout of school is going to look like okay I am and I know these are being talked about in the committees. We start talking about drop offs especially you know younger students of first and second grade um. You know we're almost in an orientation day because you you can't just do the old style of parents coming into the classroom. And helping with those students who are in trouble with the transition you know you know how do kids get out of the cars. So the larger schools sixty at a time in each grade um and how do we organize them so we may have to have a rolling start and so the committees are discussing this so. I it's a tentative day of the first day of year then once we have that I'm going to come back with a full calendar for the full school year to come forward on that so. Um I said again patience on that.
So you're looking so you're looking for a motion to uh set the opening day of school is August twenty seventh two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Yes. I'll second that Trevor.
We have Trevor seconding I didn't hear who that was so moved.
That was Philip.
Philip Philip good to see you. Okay Philip and Trevor second. And do we have any other question I see something from Chaz Emrick for suppose they read only docs oh. You have a thank you there Darius that you can read but I don't see does anybody else have a question or anything or are we ready to vote? We'll do this on a roll call I will call the voting members of each committee uh of each town and you can respond if you're here. Don't forget to switch your microphone on so.
It controlled the.
Yes Elaine. Is Elaine still here? Oh. I don't hear oh yes okay Michael Merritt. Michael out there still? Philip. Okay Philip.
Yes.
Yep.
Philip yes um. Gregory.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Maisy.
Yes.
I should probably be saying last name shouldn't I Kenneth cutback yes David Sharp.
Yes.
Carrie Etchels.
Yes.
Katie Edwards.
Yes.
Bob Holla.
Yes sir.
Maureen Nichols.
Yes.
Okay so we have a unanimous support for opening on August twenty seventh Darius.
I mean Ken uh Katie asked the question of will we have school the twenty eighth yeah the the game plan is be to come back for two days. Um and then we're going to come back and discuss the following week I do have concerns about five full days the following week. Um but we're also at that point we'll know if we have maybe we can put a professional development day in there to break it up. We talked about the younger kids who haven't been to school in six months I know some of the parents would love to get them out of the house for five days straight. Um but some of the younger ones it's going to be an exhausting week um we usually try we try to stack the week so that we have. A little bit a little bit longer before we get to a full week so we'll talk about that more when we come back with the calendar but. The idea is I really wanted to get a two school days um in before that weekend because that weekend really allows teachers to adjust. The craziness of the first two days of school and so those of you guys kind of know out there even parents adjust for the first grade you know all we need to get the you know it's this kind of you have that. There's so much energy in those first two days people are exhausted even the kids are exhausted after two days because you're you're excited for two days prior it's going to get me excited alright.
Oh.
Um. The next thing um was actually brought to my attention um by Jessica um. That this has gone out to I believe the school committee members and you know I'll share my screen where the heck is it?
Did you want to do the school meeting calendar school committee meeting calendar?
Thank you for following me honor of the agenda.
Before you jump to covid nineteen resolution.
Thank you sir um school committee agenda um. I'm asking that maybe we just right now we know that we may have more meetings in 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 August given. We just go ahead and vote the tentative one that was sent out which is basically a model of last year's.
Yep.
And then we'll 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 deal with it as it comes forward it kind of gets us meetings on the books. Um I think these virtual meetings take a little bit more time but we'll we'll figure it out we're. We're we become a very agile group.
So. So my suggestion would be a um a uh a motion to approve the school committee. Uh frontier region frontier regional union thirty eight school committee scheduled for twenty 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 one twenty one. Sub subject to change and with the addition of uh the July dates of July fifteenth. Sixteenth twenty third would it be the um twenty fourth or twenty second for? The union thirty eight ones.
Yeah I mean I think Ken my my opinion on this is that it just gives us um people scheduling. It allows them to schedule their meetings is the real means we put the calendar out. I do I want to say for the public the school committee can call a meeting within forty eight hours less than that if it's an emergency at any time for any reason so. Um I'm just saying that because we do move things around when necessary.
Um I so I I'll revise it just to say that to approve the school committee. Sketch schedule or school committee calendar. Subject to change and as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay and that was uh was that what's that Trevor?
Trevor yep.
Okay um I'm assuming no further schedule if we could take a vote again I will do another roll call. Elaine.
Yes.
Michael. Michael Merritt and Philip.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gregory.
Yes. Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Maisy Shaw.
Yes.
Kenneth cutback yes David Sharp. Still out there David?
Yes sorry yeah.
Carrie Carrie Etchels.
Yes.
Katie Edwards.
Uh yes.
Bob Holla.
Yes sir.
And Maureen Nichols. I hear a yes there faintly in the background so it was again unanimous. Now you may move on Darius.
So I'm going to um. Basically this resolution I'm I'm sharing with you I'm sharing it so that people at home know what we're talking about it's easier than um. This is the resolution that we want to send to our oh I had the one that we had edited but had our state senators representatives on it. Um but basically sending a note to our state reps and the and the governance of our um. Of our state that this the going back to school again is a um. Is it's it's an unfunded mandate and they need to be aware of that um that we we should be receiving you know I think the resolve. At the bottom that the state must guarantee that every school district receive full reimbursement for whatever covid nineteen expenses are required to follow the state mandates we continue to get. These directions by the state as you guys are all well aware um and you know I would like to send this out from. I would like to send it out from each chair of each committee not just the union I I think it'd be more of an impact that each committee chair um. Send this out so that we send a message that you know this is costing us money and it's not being funded. And you need to be knowing that we know and we're watching.
Michael Merritt says he can't see the document. In spite of your uh sharing so.
It was sent out as part of your packet Michael but uh can you guys see it can everybody else see it I'm sharing my screen right?
It came out with the agenda yes.
But can you see my shared screen?
I can see your shared screen but apparently Michael couldn't.
Well he's probably on his phone it's really small.
Uh that could be. Most other people see it so. Try pinning the document Ben says.
Um it's just a very oh there it goes it finally it finally just popped into view I think it was just a delay in the video thanks.
Okay. Alright very good. Um so do you? Do you want uh?
You know what if you do just do a roll call vote that'll give us a vote for each of the chairs to send because you'll have a majority on each of the committees.
Okay we'll do a roll call. Roll call vote for the entire all committee members this will be all committee members so if your name is called please remember to activate your microphone. Elaine Campbell. Was that a yes Michael Merritt?
Yes.
Philip Cantor.
Yes.
Ashley Dion. I don't know if she's out there uh great Denise Storm.
Yes.
Gregory Gashell.
Yes.
Peter Gagarin.
Yes.
Maisy Shaw.
Yes.
Keith McFarland.
Yes.
Jessica Corwin.
Yes.
Kenneth cutback yes David Sharp.
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel.
Yes.
Mary Raymond.
Yes.
Carrie Etchels.
Yes.
Katie Edwards.
Yes.
Bob Holla.
Yes sir.
Maureen Nichols.
Can you just tell me what the vote is on because I got kicked off.
Oh it's it's on um the covid nineteen resolution saying that uh we do not want unfunded mandates.
Okay yes Maureen.
Okay great it's unanimous across all committees thank you very much everyone.
Alright and and as Phil said uh Philip said that we had a mission we had Adam Hines is he's the he's the senator for representing Conway and we we recognized that last night at the frontier meeting. And Donna is going to take care of that Donna is listening on and she's going to make that happen.
Great. We move can you hear my background music here evaluation of superintendent's job performance?
So um I sent out that's the uh. The uh the form uh for the survey earlier this week um I don't believe you had enough time given the fact that. And we only had about four members from the elementary had filled it out um when I checked in with Donna this afternoon um so. I guess we should probably put that off the next meeting I do hold all the responsibility on that it's been it's been crazy and I was one of those things I had to put together. Put all that information and get it out to you and I didn't get out to you this week and it really a couple of days was not enough time for all of you to go in and do that so um.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah why don't we why don't we treat this as a homework assignment that it be completed um by the eighth of July? So there's a week to process it before the meeting on the fifteenth. Does that seem reasonable?
Yep and and I think I think that that probably be good and the chairs can discuss how they want to just to discuss them.
Right.
Because it's kind of. It's squishy about how you can exactly do it and I don't care that much how we do it.
Okay. That that seems reasonable and if if no one if someone on the one of the committees did not receive the evaluation. Um email from Darius please let Donna know so that she can get it out to you.
I'm being told I'm still presenting is that true it doesn't say it on my screen.
I have no idea.
Well.
Hey.
You're front center.
So.
Well that's good. I think um so Ken can I just add something to the the new business um. Because I think it's important that I did and I I talked about this the last night as well.
Sure.
Um you know basically I made up this you know the agenda was from a while back and so I didn't get it I didn't update it before it was reposted. Um you know following the murder of George Floyd by a police officer I sent out a uh a document from the leadership. With the leadership of the town set up a document together to to address the community. And we received a lot of feedback administration and I we had we had several meetings and we felt that um we needed to do more than what was said in that letter. Um that initial letter and we came up with a uh in another letter um that kind of pointed out I sent that out last Friday and then you should have all received it. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about um you know we as a school are um. Looking at ourselves and what we are doing to look at equity in our schools looking at racial diversity and racism in our schools. We right now are creating a committee um it's called the anti racism and equality committee. It's coming out of frontier where there's already a student group in place and Scott Reg is taking the lead with um Kelsey Crop is one of our guidance counselors. And they reached out to parents in our community and leaders in the elementary schools of the current groups that they already had in the elementary schools. They were doing work around this to try to get a move in district wide in planning district wide not only curriculum. Um but looking about what we're doing as a community and so forth and so I just wanted to mention that in this. And because a lot of this is on our minds right now as our nation's struggling with this um and then what are we doing as an educational body and that so. We have some things in place but we can always do more and do better um and. Um and and this is the work they're going to do so they're really doing some planning over the summer for the fall to kick off on this so. Um.
Great.
So I just wanted to kind of mention that because it did go out in in an email um but. Took a chance to talk about.
Alright very good um so is that it? Is that information? Yes what was that?
Um I I just a quick question for Darius the um. That what you referred to I think really hits students at the school level but do we have anything in terms of human resources um. To either attract or retain more uh teachers or employees of color.
You know we don't we struggle um we struggle and I I talk about this even uh with area superintendents um getting applicants of color. Um little you know. In the sense of even recruiting and um and so forth in that area I mean I'd be open to hear any ideas about how we can do more around that. It's very difficult um you know talking about this in a large public forum like this is very difficult to get applicants of color when. Um they are so sought after by so many districts and it's very difficult also to um I I don't know what we can do more. We are very uh be very blunt we're a very white community um and to be attractive to um. Employees of color you know. I I'm open to ideas about how we can get more applications because quite frankly um even in my role as principal. Saw very few in in my in my entire time in administration at that level um and. You know I don't know what we can do to make our district tractable attracted for um employees of color because we do need more diversity um. You know in our teaching ranks and I. You know, in our teaching ranks. And I think this is a statewide problem, I talked with a group in, I think it was the superintendent. I don't get the name of the town wrong, I think it was Randolph, where they, they, you know, their percentage was, you know, I think like 10% teachers of color, and their diversity was 60% students of color. And they couldn't, they can't find enough applicants, they started creating a teacher program in their buildings for high school students to get more students to go into the teaching profession. And so I hear what you're saying, Keith, but we don't have anything in place, and maybe I can ask the committee to also look at that as well. But I also, if there's anybody out there listening who can give me references, ideas there too, but I know it's a struggle for, for most districts. And I know Amherst has done some things outside the box.
Yeah, but we also still struggle with it as well. It's difficult, but I just think it's something, we need to take a kind of a two-pronged approach. One would be to provide for students, but administratively or in terms of employees, we have to make some efforts in that regard. So I just need to think about going forward.
This is, Trevor, we need to make that effort as, as a town as well, in, in all aspects of, you know, of town life and not just our schools. So I'm thinking hard about that as well, and I went to an MMA conference in Boston last year, and the League of Cities had, had a great program, and I was kind of looking into that a little bit, to see what, you know, what we could do on a, on a town basis here. I'd love to group in the schools on that, so definitely looking at something in the future, what we can do to, to try and expand on that.
So.
Trevor, this is Philip, just, I mean, I've been looking at this too, from Conway's point of view, and the thing about our town's history is that in the 1970s and even in the 80s, all of our towns used to sponsor refugee families.
Yep.
To bring them into the community and create more diversity. And that is all fallen by the, and a lot of that was in partnership with churches, which now
Right.
have the, the population to participate in that. But that's, to me, that's, that's the direction to go in.
Yeah, it's a great idea, and you know, Lexington did a, did a big study with the League of Cities to, to to try and, you know, kind of break that down and figure out, you know, just recognizing the problem for one, and, and looking at ways to, to fix that, so. I'm excited, I'd love to work with you on it further too, so, it'd be great.
I noticed a couple of comments here in the chat column. Kim, Kim has said that we had a beginning plan for COVID, before COVID, and we're going to go to local colleges' job fairs this spring, this past spring, I assume. Denise Danak is saying actively involving student interns from the university colleges into our schools is another idea to consider. So, for those of you that haven't seen those in the chats, those suggestions are there, and notes are there as well. So. Thank you for that, Darius, and thank you for, you know, taking leadership and getting the, the initial correspondence out from the school last week. It was good, it was good to see, so. And we are at the end of business, are we moving to executive session?
Ken, Ken, before we do, this is Philip, just
Oh, yes.
One little announcement, and that's just, you know, we're halfway through the most important school days in the calendar, which is annual meetings. So for all those that are listening, Conway's is Saturday afternoon. Waitley's is Tuesday. If you are listening to this and you live in those communities, please come to town meeting, vote on the school budget, and stay to vote on the playground.
Thank you, Phil. So. So. Does that bring us to executive session, Darius?
Yeah, we we do not need to go to an executive session.
Okay. I'm not hearing any.
We had a negotiations committee meeting prior to this meeting. And the group wanted to reconvene next week to discuss further, so we don't. I'm going to guess, unless there's members of that committee, I think we should go into that, into executive committee, into the session, so.
I think you're right.
Okay. All right, then I can entertain a motion to adjourn. Who was that?
Oh, fucking.
Oh, it's Phil and Trevor?
Yeah.
The Phil and Trevor Show.
That's right.
And I'm assuming I'm not going to hear any further discussion, I will call the voting members again. Elaine Campbell?
Yes.
Michael Merritt?
Yes.
Philip Cantor?
Yes.
Gregory Gashell?
Yes.
Peter Gagarin?
Yes.
Maisy Shaw?
Yes.
Kenneth Cutterback, yes. David Sharp?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel, I'm sorry, Carrie Etchels? Katie Edwards?
Yes.
Robert Holla? Bob, you still there?
I think Bob left to go to executive session, so I just texted him that there is none.
Well, I'm sure he would vote in the affirmative, and Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
I thank you all, thank you all for your time this evening. And Darius, pass on our committee's appreciation for all of the efforts of your faculty and administrative team. So. Thank you all, see you all.
Yep, see you soon.